Good morning, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Eddie will be right back. He had to go get his other glasses. Like all of us have three different pairs. All right, everybody get a chance to look over the minutes. Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Got a motion on second? Got a second, all those in favor? All right, minutes approved. All right, let's move on to first order of business. ZV 5471, 108 St. Simon's Avenue, consider variance to Glen County zoning ordinance 701.5 to reduce the current front yard setback by six feet to allow construction of accessory structure from St. Simon's Island at 108 St. Simon's Avenue, parcel number 04-02730. Property is located, it's zoned R6, one-family residential, Bob and Joy Sweeney owners. Here from staff, please.
Good morning. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Again, before you today, we have ZV 5471. This item was deferred from a previous meeting or due to trying to find out some more information about the abandonment. There was an abandonment of the proposed right-of-way, and the property is owned by the Sweeneys. So that has been clarified. It's a revision of the survey, so showing the correct front setback. So as you see in black is the current setback, in green is the request. Here's the floor plan. Again, this garage is for storage. And neighbors in support. And here are your possible motions. Owners are here and available as well.
I notice there's no recommendation here from staff.
Yes, there's no recommendation proposed on this one.
Chris, can you go back to the survey that showed, it looks like the first, that one? So if, I'm just, I'm looking at the green line, and it shows that that is the request, but it still shows part of the slab encroaching beyond that. So what is, is that the full request, or is the green line just a representation of?
The green line's a representation, yeah.
Do we have, I don't see it indicated on this, do we have a survey that shows definitively what it is from the property line to the corner of that slab?
Yes, the survey was included in your packet. Oh, that was their request for six feet.
Any other questions for staff?
Why wouldn't they request it for, at least to get the building, the whole building? Because it looks like it's going to be evidently about six and a half feet. Why wouldn't they just request it for the, I don't, I don't understand why they got a partial?
Yes, I'm not sure as soon-
Slabs in place, I think.
I'll defer to the, to the owner for that, yeah.
Anything else for staff? Thanks, sir. All right, advocate someone present for the applicant? Step to the podium, give us your name and relationship.
I'm Joy Sweeney, owner. Good morning. So we're, yeah, we're requesting to, I guess, push back the setback, so we can build the garage on that slab. The front part's just going to be, it's just a concrete parking, like a driveway. I'm not sure why that corner is still in there, so it may, we may need to request it a little bit more.
So you don't know exactly how much you need, is that what you're saying?
If you would, please, sir, can I grant state your name for the record, please?
Rob Sweeney. The architect, when he was drawing it, figured out that we needed six feet to make it out of the right-of-way.
Do you have, like, I won't show on the screen. So on the corner where the green line is, it, you know, it looks like, you know-
It's going to be just shy-
A little bit showing-
A little shy.
Right, and that's, that's what I was questioning, is do we, you know, it shows 14 foot from the property line to the green line, but I want to know what it is from the property line to the corner of that piece of slab.
I don't know.
I was just curious why they didn't, didn't show that, since that's the most encroachment on that, that side.
I would say it's another foot, or half a foot.
Yeah, half a foot, probably.
Anybody having questions for?
Chris, can we, can we change this up here to include that extra few inches? Or do we have to redo this again?
You could make a recommendation to, you could make a recommendation on what, as a condition that this would be approved by the, whichever setback you would like, or you could make a condition that it could go no further than the existing slab.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, males getting questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, for public comments, is there anybody here present that would like to speak in favor of this variance request? Okay, anybody here to speak against it? Okay, here and none, close the public comments.
Yeah, I'm, Chris, oh. Yeah, I, I just, like you had said earlier, in terms of that corner, I just, I just have difficulty when something comes before us, like, for instance, I understand what Eddie said about conditions that can be added to it. It's like if we grant the variance, then there's still, the corner of that is still in the setback, and I don't know that it's inches. I don't know how much it is, and so consequently, we've already given six feet into it, and so what if that's another, what's if that's a two-foot corner, or three, or, or two-and-a-half-foot corner? Now we've, now we've continued to usurp that, that 20-foot setback that other people are, are following in the neighborhood, to my knowledge. I just have-
It couldn't be two feet, because that's six feet, that would be six feet from there to there. So the best, I mean, on the heavy side, it might be a foot, heavy side, I don't, but just from a-
Okay.
That's six feet from, from a black line to green line, so it couldn't be-
I see, okay.
No more than a foot, and I don't think it would be a foot.
All right, thanks. I'm good.
Okay, any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion, or?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve this. I'd like to approve it to take it all the way to the corner, so that they don't have to come back in the future if they sell it, or, you know, whatever happens, that, that it's, the, the variance goes to the actual corner of that concrete, but no further. For ZV 5471. Just add that condition that, that the variance includes that, up to that corner.
And we could submit, we could have them submit a revised survey showing that exact distance, and then we could add that to the packet to solidify that.
Okay, great.
All right, you got a motion on the floor, you have a second, all those in favor? All right, you got your variance? Thank you. All right. Moving on to ZV 5555-338 Peppertree Crossing, lot 25R. Consider variance to the planned development district PDZM 2773. Side yard setback requirements at 338 Peppertree Crossing Drive, parcel number 03-22953. Proposed lot 25R, Jackson Surveying applicant and property, or excuse me, and Peppertree 3 LLC owner. I hear from staff, please.
Good morning, Board of Appeals member Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. So this, this application, as well as the next one, are both adjacent lots in Peppertree Crossing neighborhood. So this shows where the property is now. There's still additional step needed that the applicant is working on. So this has been two, it was two lots, it was originally subdivided as two lots. A few years ago, they did combine the lots into one, into one parcel. They are in the process of vacating that plat to go back to the two lots. And that has not been recorded yet. We're still waiting for some additional information from the surveyor to record that. But as soon as that's submitted from, by the surveyor, the county will record it, and it'll be back to the two lots. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because it does look like it's one lot right now. So they are required by the planned development text to have seven feet for an interior setback. They are seeking to reduce that by two feet, and so their interior setback line would be, or their interior setback would be five feet from the property line. So this shows what they will be going back to with the two lots. These are the proposed homes, and this red line represents the five-foot setback interior. They do have some restrictions on the property. There is a 10-foot utility easement that they cannot get a variance from, so they cannot come into this 10-foot utility easement. And there's also a regu, lot is irregularly shaped, so there are some challenges to try to develop a single-family home on the property, and I know that the applicant's team explained that they did look at a lot of different options to build on this property, and they were left with having to seek a variance, because they were not able to fit it based on the shape and the other restrictions. So these are your possible motions, and I believe Jackson Surveying is here representing this applicant. Thank you.
All right, any questions for staff?
So it was originally two lots, they combined them one lot, now they're cutting them back to turn it back into two lots?
That's right, yeah, they're formally vacating the plat, and it'll return it to lots, and it says vacated. Yes, sir.
I got one, is there a square footage requirement for these lots, or is it in the planned development text?
There is, I don't have that off, offhand, so they're going back to the original configuration. And so it did, it did meet the PD text originally, so it looks like they're each at, what, 1.59 for this lot. Yeah, they're about 7,500 square feet, is the lot size.
Okay, any other questions for, for staff? All right, thank you. And you say the applicant or representative is here, can we-
I think Jackson Surveying is, is here for this application.
State your name and tell us your story.
I'm David Doughty, I work for Jackson Surveying, representing this variance. Just here for any questions or anything, I mean, they have, obviously, the houses were actually the same house, trying to put on both lots. We have twisted them multiple ways, we actually shortened one of the houses and one of the garages, and eliminated, you know, a porch to try to, to make this work, so that it matches what's in the neighborhood.
Just curious, do you know why it was two, and they went to one, and then now going back, or?
That was done with a different surveyor, going back, creating the one lot, so I don't know why it was turned into one lot, and I know, you know, back to two, they were just wanting to get back to, to get, so they could do that same type of house in the area.
One, one of the things that I look for is what's, what's the hardship, and how was the hardship created? You know, and kind of looking at it here, it looks like, okay, I can sell two lots for a lot more money than I can sell for one lot. But I mean, I'm, I understand it was that way before, and it did meet the text before, so I'm kind of on the fence myself personally, but that's, that's something I look for, not sure, I have my colleagues.
Is there no, they couldn't redesign the house, or anything to fit in them?
I mean, like I said, it's, it's, those houses are, are designed to match what's already in this subdivision. It's a community-type, a retirement community, and the houses are pretty similar. And there was some redesign, I think, I think this is like the third house layout we've tried to stick in those lots.
So do you by chance know what the minimum, do they have a minimum square footage of the houses they can build in this neighborhood, or do you know that?
I do not know that.
Because what I'm guessing is that they're probably a square foot minimum that's for the neighborhood, and that's what's taken to pacify, to, to get these houses where they can build them, because that was approved in two lots. And I, the, it'd be interesting to know what the-
Do we know what the square footage of the proposed houses are? Do you happen to have that information?
Not off the top of my head, I could calculate it.
Rough numbers is 1568 on the footprint, and I bet it's a 1,500 square foot, probably, in, in order to get the, that would be, that would be my guess, and to keep continuity in the neighborhood and not have two small homes. I might see why they're doing what they're doing, and is there, we haven't got any opposition yet, so, that's all I've got.
What, what is the building between the garage and the house? Is that just a breezeway on 25R?
Correct.
And this will be the only, this will be the only setback less than ordinance in that whole complex?
As far as I know, this is a very odd placement of a lot. It's, as you see, it's got three road intersections, it's basically surrounded by road, except for that common area in the back. But there's a drainage easement running along that, that one side. So the, I mean, if you went back to the original layout of the subdivision, it was just a, it's just odd personally. I didn't lay it out or anything, but it is a very weird layout. Very constrained.
Any more comments or questions for applicant?
Is there anybody living in this neighborhood yet, or is it completely fell?
Yeah, it's, it's full.
Okay, yeah, I'll get to you in a second, man.
And if I understood Stephanie correctly, the survey hasn't been completed, so that's why there's no stakes out there or anything? Because I found it very odd yesterday, I took my time, I went out there to look at your variance, and all I saw was one big grassy knoll, and I could not tell what I was looking at, and I drove all the way out there. What I did see was a bird box, two, two wells, and three four-by-fours that were green up by the end of it, and besides that. So if my voice sounds that I'm a little annoyed, you're absolutely right, I am a little annoyed. Because I expected to see, if you're asking for two variances, and you're stating a lot, and one says, and, and on the application, it says, this particular lot is 6,921 square feet. That didn't matter, that didn't make any sense to me, it didn't matter, I, I had no idea, and not being equal to these guys up here, and being a layperson, I go out there, and it was like, I just needed to say that, because I'm pretty annoyed about it. It's not going to impact, it's, I'm, I'm, it, it's, it's not going to impact how I see it one way or the other, I just need to let you know, because-
Yeah, do you have a full copy of the survey? Do you have a full, it's not showing on the screen.
That's, that's what we're looking at, right, on our screen.
Yeah, so you're, you're unable to see when we actually did the survey, this has been a long process.
We got a copy of that.
Okay, the, our field work was done in 2018, I mean, I can't, I can't control whether or not there's stakes there, you know, five years ago.
Well, it says there's concrete monuments.
Right, they're there, but I mean, they're probably buried, so we would have put stakes in the ground in 2018 originally, when we surveyed this. They've been dealing with this lot since then.
That's fine, I accept what you said, if you want to roll the dice and have, and not talk to the owner and say, maybe you ought to put up stakes up there, since you have two variances to show two different lots, because you might have somebody who's a layperson, who's on the board, that comes out there, and all he's going to look at is a whole bunch of grass, and then you're going to want him to come and vote in your favor, when he has no concept of what he saw yesterday.
Yes, sir.
But that's, I understand what you said.
Okay, any other questions for applicant? All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone here to speak for it? If you would, please step to the podium and state your name.
Hi, I'm Becky Anis, I live across the street from this lot. I will be staring at the side, at the side of it, and I'm, I think I'm hearing you say there is some revisions to the plans. I really want to know what I will be staring at from across the street when they build these houses here.
I'm Catherine Schulenberg, and I live next to Becky, I'm also right across the street. And our houses are quite a bit bigger than what you're going to put in there, and they also, the one that has a breezeway, it, it, we're very distressed about the whole thing, we just think that there's, it's too small for two houses to, to enhance the, the property and the community. Frankly, we'd rather see a pretty park in there instead, and we think that would go much better than what they've got. We just think that this is not okay with us, the people that live around it are not happy about this at all. And that's all.
Which, which street do y'all live on, are you on?
Waterstone.
Waterstone.
You're on Waterstone.
There's a slide that has all the, isn't there a slide that has all the lights on it?
Well, my lot is 9R, so I don't know, it's not, doesn't show that. I don't have that.
I'm 545, she's facing 545, she's to the left of me.
That's my house number, 541.
So you're on the, that northeast corner of, right there by Peppertree Crossing and Waterstone.
And and we already have some other homes that have gone in at the end, at the small end. And the driveways are so close that when, if one person is backing out of the driveway and somebody's coming down the road to get to theirs, they have to stop and wait. And two of them think that they're going to end up backing into each other at some point. I mean, it's very close. There's a lot of houses there. We just, we think we need the green space. We just don't want two more houses to be cut up like that, too.
Also, I'd like to add, I do believe that these will be the only two out there where you can actually see their backyard. All the others, you're either backed up to a fence or you're backed up to a hedge row. We would like to see what's going on, what they plan to do, what's going to look like and how it's going to affect us and also the property value.
Okay. Yeah, the the ultimate look of the house and all that is not what we're here to decide this board. Our, our decision we are tasked with is, is on what I would say the rear of the houses, but it's technically the sides. Because the rear is actually toward the common area. Yeah. So it's actually between the houses, which.
Let's see how that will affect it.
Is really only seen from the street side or not seen from the street side. So.
Well, we'd also like to see, you know, exactly what that looks like. How close will that be? What the front of the house is going to look like. I think I heard you say, or heard the young man say, that there's been some revisions to the house that will go there. Well, when we, when I moved out there, I was shown all of the different houses that would be built out there. And I made a selection from that. So it sounds to me like there's going to be a revision of the plot of the house.
That what the house looks like, again, that's not what this board is here to debate. That would be a developer question, not not something that we can answer. Because our decision doesn't affect what the house looks like.
Well, will your decision give them the go ahead to start, to begin?
Possibly. It depends on how we, how we rule on. But, you know, what the house looks like, we're, we're not here to debate that. That's not in our, not in our purview.
I understand that.
We're here to decide whether you can have 10 feet between the house. You're supposed to have 14 feet between the house.
Right.
They want to reduce that to 10.
Yeah.
That's the only thing, that's the only thing we're here for.
And the, the well, you guys.
Yeah, well, they show a well these days.
You're aware of that. They say they're going to move it, but they can't move it across the street.
And again, that's not not in our purview at all. Our purview is just strictly reducing the spacing between the two houses. That is all we are here to, to to rule on today. The location of the well, I mean, that's a developer. Property Owners Association question. We're not, we don't have any kind of authority over that.
Thank you very much.
I understand our purview, but I do want to ask you a question. And ma'am, to my left, I'm sorry, I didn't pick it. Yes, you, yes, ma'am. You had mentioned that you were shown model homes and you, you kind of tapped into what I was going to ask you. When you, when you purchased, what was your expectation of that, that grassy area that I saw yesterday?
To tell you the truth, I had no expectation at that time because I was more concerned about my house when it would start, when they would start building and all. I really didn't.
Okay. Were you told what it might, were you ever told what it might be?
I'm sorry?
Were you ever told what that might be?
No.
Okay, fine.
No.
May I add to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Pepper Tree is a beautiful community. And there's a phase one, which is the older section. They have a, it's just all the amenities are there. And then you go back to phase two where the houses are not row houses. They're single standing homes. And there is no, there's no continuity there at all. We just feel like it's not helping the whole community as a whole to entice people to come and want to live here. Because, you know, now we're going to be.
Deviating.
Completely different than what the rest of the community is. So we're very distressed.
Sorry to hear. Okay. Thank, thank you for your comments. Anyone else just like to get up to speak in favor or against? Please step to the podium and state your name.
Good morning. My name's Paul Gill. I live in 331 Pepper Tree. If you want to look on your map there to see where that is. I would be facing the side, I'm assuming. My question is, and I don't know if it was answered by the gentleman before, do we know what the square footage of those houses are going to be?
We don't know.
They're around 1,500, but we don't know that for a fact. Because we don't know if they're one story or two. The footprint equals out to approximate 1,500.
Yeah, because the two smallest sized homes in that, in that part of the development, I think were 14 six. And then ours is, my house is 16 five. And then they get bigger from there.
Is yours one story or two?
My, well, it's one story, but there is a capability of of finishing this second floor into a room.
Okay.
One room, one bath. I mean, it's walkable. Let's put it that way. But I was just getting at, if, it sounds to me like they're trying to put the smallest size in there to accommodate. And to the question that you asked Catherine, or what's your first name? Becky. I was told, because I just bought a year ago, we had our house built, okay? And I was told that there would be two lots, maybe two lots, possibly one lot. So it was question mark, question mark, you know? But we were, you know, I I was informed. So I'm, I'm not advocating against the project. I mean, I understand I was a businessman. You, you want to get as much as you can. But I also understand their, their feelings that they want some continuity. They want it to look good. And I'm, and I'm sure they will. But how much space? One other question is, how much space is there in between the two houses? I guess what I'm looking at is the driveway is going to be along this side for this house.
I assume the driveway comes straight off of.
Yeah.
Lake Spur and?
Right.
Waterstone.
And and did we clarify that that, that space between the garage and the house, that's a breezeway?
Yes.
Porchway?
It is.
You know, is it going to be closed in breezeway?
Again, that's, again, that's not in our purview what we're here to discuss.
What I'm getting at, if it's not, then that'll be completely different from any of the other houses in the whole complex, old or new.
Another question. Is there a Property Owners Association out there?
Excuse me?
Is there a property owners or an HOA?
Oh, yes. Yes, there is. Yes.
So the, these are questions that.
Yes, I understand. Okay.
Have to go to them. And, you know, the look of the house is something that that's in their scope.
Okay.
Of what the face of the house looks like and the footprint and all that. Those are things they have to approve.
And I understand if they, if they get the variance, then it's a go no matter what. I just wanted to let you know, too, that I was told there could possibly be two lots out there.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, anyone else here would like to speak for or against? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment section. Gentlemen? Any discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
If it's a one story house, it seems like me, if they can make a two story house, they make it small enough to fit in there.
I'm, well, I'm just, from a retirement community, I would think a set of stairs probably is not advantageous. I, I don't know if that, if I was retiring, I'd be looking for less stairs than more stairs. That's just me.
I, I had the opportunity to superintend one of, one of the houses going up out there. And it, we did finish the, the bone, the bonus room. And basically, it was, it was maybe, I don't know, 12 feet wide, 20 feet long, plus a bathroom and a closet. So, I mean, it added another bedroom. But, I don't know. I don't think there's any actual two story houses out there in that neighborhood, an actual two story house. Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's, that's like the one that I did. And the owner was from California. They elected to go ahead and finish that room out. But like I said, I don't think there's any actual two story houses out there. So. Full two story, yes.
It's, it's probably considered a one and a half. Yeah, either way, I mean, I see where you're going. It increases the footage.
Yes.
To a substantial amount.
Yep.
What's thinking, gentlemen? I'm kind of torn. I mean, I, you know, I, I look for, look for hardships. But, you know, I also have to consider that it was previously approved and previously platted as two lots. It is an irregular lot. It's my understanding and staff correctly from that it's going back to what it was originally, correct?
That's right. It wa, it was originally platted as two lots. And so now they are going, they're returning to that. But I think to our question, there is a seven foot required setback that is going to five. So that's, that's.
So either, either way, they would have had to come before us for a variance the way it was originally, correct?
Yes, exactly. If they, if they were looking to do five or anything less than seven feet, then that would still have to come to you all. So even if they hadn't combined it and going back to the two, if they had, you know, kept it as the two original, yeah, it still would have been the seven foot setback. So any reduction.
Right behind me at 10 feet.
What you're thinking?
Yeah, mister, when it was two lots and it went back to one, did, was, did Pepper, was Pepper Tree, was LLC the, the owner of it? Do you know?
That I don't know offhand.
Does anybody know? What's that?
I think it's still the same ownership. I mean, that's one of the criteria in the plat vacation is, is that the ownership is, is the same to go back to what it was. So I'd have to confirm that, though, but I believe that's the case.
I don't think that Pepper Tree is under now the same ownership as it was when it was first developed. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe the ownership's still the same from when they combined it and now going back to the two. I, I think that's only been a few years' time. It hasn't been as long as since it was originally platted. And the other, like, there is a plat requirement of seven feet between, between the lots, but that's not, or seven feet between, wasn't it between buildings? Yeah. So there's a minimum of seven feet between buildings. And so they still meet that by having them, the 10 feet if it is reduced. But that, that is on the plat, the original plat that required the seven feet between buildings. And I don't know if there was maybe some contemplation that you were going to have maybe two units sharing the same lot, not having a lot line. I'm not sure exactly why that was in there, that that might have been the situation they were planning for.
So you're saying there only needs to be seven feet between the two houses?
No, there's basically two different levels. So there's seven feet from the property line. That's a requirement. But then there's an absolute minimum of seven feet between buildings. That's a, that's on the plat. So I, I'm not sure why the two were on there. The only thing I can think of was, you know, maybe there were going to be, you know, kind of like a multifamily project on one lot. You know, there'd be multiple buildings on one lot. And they wanted to make sure there were seven feet between those buildings if there was not a lot line in place. So. I'm only estimating this with the case there I was.
In the application, mister, on D, it says the special conditions or circumstances. Do you folks fill that in? Do you, did you write what was, not you personally perhaps, or maybe it was you personally. Is it staff that fills that in? Because here's what I'm asking, because this is part of my concern. And I wasn't going to voice it, but I wanted to ask about this first. So then I would say it. It says the circumstances leading to the nonconforming structure are the result of the owner. My feeling is, based on what the purview of our board is, it should be period and nothing else there. But it goes on to say, however, the use of the lot has a reduced economic value. And that's, that's part of, as a layperson, that's part of my, my issue is that. I looked it up on GIS. It's worth $60,000. It's being assessed for $24,000. They put two houses on there. They're probably upwards of $750,000. And so they're asking, and I'm not speaking for anybody else, they're asking me to vote yes. To move from a, what you stated, the staffs may have stated that it's, what I had said, it's reduced economic value. To my vote, giving them probably, I don't know, $350,000, $400,000 in profit. And that's where I'm stuck on. But I felt when the chairman was saying to the folks, it's not in our purview. I felt the economic piece wasn't in our purview, though that's stuck with me. But I just remembered that it was written in there and I didn't, so if it kind of like opened the door in that respect. And so we begin talking about, yeah, it's, it's, the owner has caused the issue. And basically, it's ka-ching, ka-ching to ring up the dollars and cents. And they could build, my feeling was they could build one house on there and they'd still make more money, but they're interested in building two. But thank you. I just wanted to.
Yeah, that, I mean, the application itself was fed out by the applicant, but, yeah, the staff report, though. And a lot of that is, you know, the applicant did share with us that, you know, they really did look at a variety of different options to make it work. And were, you know, really left with feeling like this was really the only way to achieve what they needed to do on the property. So it's based off of that.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Want to get a motion, gentleman, or what's? I'm kind of back and forth on this. I mean, I, I can, honestly, I can see both sides of it. I really can.
Well, maybe to move the. No, never mind. So I guess we're treating both of these, both of these variance requests as one. Is that correct?
Uh, no. So we actually do have them as two separate items. So this one is, is only for lot 25R. So it is the one at the corner of Pepper Tree and Lake Spur. The next one will do the other lot. So it'll be two separate motions.
Okay.
I've got one question for Mr. Doughty. I think maybe it's a yes or no question. Are there any other substandard lots that we may be looking at in this subdivision or do you know?
Mr. Doughty, could you, could you answer that question?
From what I remember, those would be on the two odd shape lots. The rest of them are more normal, the, you know, more rectangular type.
Sure.
Lots.
25 and 26R?
25 and 26R.
Okay.
Are regular shape lots. Because of that road, I mean, they created a track.
So one, one other simple question. Will you step, if you might step back to the podium? And I'll ask the question as you, as you approach the other lots around it. What, what are the roughly, what's the square footages of those lots versus to what we're cutting these lots back to? Are they close to similar size or, because when you got this odd shaped lot, it does limit your parameters, which you can do. Are the other lots comparable size to what we're trying to reduce the 25 and 26R to?
I don't have a copy of the subdivision and I didn't, we didn't do the subdivision originally. So I can't tell you exactly. originally, so I can't tell you exactly what the square footages are, um, I know they meet the minimum requirement, that was the original setup in the PD text, um.
Do you know what, I'll stop you, and what is the minimum requirement, I don't remember either, I'm stopping.
I have the wrong, I, I, all I have is the map of, of this lot, I do not have the map of the, of the subdivision, I don't know if y'all have access to that subdivision plat.
Mr. Chairman, back to you if you want to suggest for a motion.
All right, I was gonna see if Chris could find that, just see what the minimum PD square footage was. Bear with us a second, he's researching to see if he can get the answer. Well, that's, that's what we're looking at, so we want to find, you know, to get a definitive.
So per the plat, uh, twenty-five and twenty-six are slightly different because the common area was chopped out, but on the plat, twenty-five R was seventy-seven hundred square feet, and twenty-six R was seventy-five thirty. And that is comparable to all the other lots, the lots along the north are roughly sixty-eight-hundred-eleven square feet.
So these two lots are actually bigger?
Before the common area was taken out.
So, so right now, this, uh, the parcel is point five, point three-one acres, and the other lots are point seven-one and point seven, or point, point one-seven, point seventeen and point sixteen, so they're roughly about, they're roughly commonly a similar sized lot as the other lots in the neighborhood.
All right, that, that was kind of one of the questions I had, make sure we weren't shrinking way below what is common in the area, so. All right, so back to our discussion, any, wanna make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve ZV five-five-five-five as presented.
All right, got a motion on the floor, have a second.
I'm not, I'm not a fan of this, but, I mean, it's, it's legal, I mean, the lot's big enough, I, I don't like the seven foot between the houses, you know, but I think my hands are tied, so I'll, I'll second.
Oh, yep.
Go ahead.
Can I still ask a question to you?
Sure.
We are just voting on twenty-five R?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, got a motion on the floor in a second, those in favor? Those opposed? Two gays, excuse me, three, so motion passes, we grant the variance for ZV five-five-five-five. All right, moving on to the next one. Okay, ZV five-five-five-six, three-three-eight, Pepper Tree Crossing, Lot twenty-six R, consider variance to the plan development district PD, ZM two-seven-seven-three, side yard setback requirements at three-three-eight Pepper Tree Crossing Drive, parcel number zero-three-dash-two-two-nine-five-three, proposed lot twenty-six R, Jackson Surveying, applicant and Pepper Tree Three LLC owner, and from staff, please.
Thank you, uh, so this is the adjacent parcel. Again, here is the property, and it is twenty-six R at the corner of Pepper Tree and Waterstone Circle, um, this property is also requested as the five-foot setback for the interior lot line, uh, they also have a, um, ten-foot utility easement along the property line that they cannot go into, um, and there's also a well easement on this lot that also, um, impacts the property. And these are your motions, and, uh, Mr. Dowdy's here representing this application as well.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions, and we'll kind of hash it out, any more questions for staff on this one?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, all right, if we can, uh, Mr. Dowdy, if you'd like to step back up. Again, I know we kind of hashed everything out, but still wanna go through the procedure.
Yep, I'm David Dowdy with Jackson Surveying.
Anybody having comments, questions for Mr. Dowdy on this one?
Yeah, I want to apologize that my annoyance, it wasn't meant to be to you personally the first time up.
No, you're okay.
But you know how I feel about it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any comments?
This is a smaller lot than the other, this is small, about five-hundred feet, it looks like.
Yeah, this one's. This is one for one.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Can you help me with that? That's what I was just trying to look up on, on the phone, how much smaller is it?
It says the text right here.
Okay, there it is, right there, I was trying to look at their application to see what their, what the footage was that they had stated.
Square, is six thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet, and this one is, uh, six thousand four-hundred-and-fifty square feet.
Yep, yeah, I found it, thank you, yep, that's.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Dowdy?
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, back to the public comment section, uh, anyone like to speak for or against this particular application? Step to the podium, state your name for the record, please.
Yes, Paul Gill, three-three-one, Pepper Tree, I, I just want to clarify, what are you guys voting on, the distance between the two buildings?
That's it.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the total distance between those two buildings going to be?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, so they're going from seven feet to five feet on each piece of property?
Fourteen, fourteen to ten.
It'll be ten. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to speak for or against? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public comment section, uh. Comments, discussion, gentlemen? No discussion, uh, call for a motion?
Well, I'll, I mean, being as we pass the last one, I'm gonna go ahead and recommend we, we approve ZV fifty-five, fifty-six, three-thirty-eight, Pepper Tree Crossing, uh, as presented.
Okay, got a motion on, sorry?
No, I'm good, go ahead.
Motion on the floor, have a second? Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Those opposed? Same vote, variance is granted. Thank y'all, all right. Moving on down the line to, where we at? ZV five-five-six-one, three-ten Gateway Center Boulevard, consider a variance request for an increase in maximum building height from thirty-five feet to fifty-one feet at three-ten Gateway Center Boulevard, parcel zero-three-two-six-five-six-three. The property is zone plan development district ZM two-seven-one-five, Jake Lemmings, Robert, Civil Engineering Agent for John Callaway, WJS Glenn LLC, and Callaway Land Holdings Company Owner, hear from staff, please.
Good morning, Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning, uh, this parcel is a two-point-three-six-five acre lot in the canal crossing to plan development, the applicant is proposing to construct a fifty-one-foot-tall, four-story Everhome Suites Hotel on the site, and the mainland planning commission did grant site plan approval for this this past Tuesday, with the condition that this variance was passed, of course. Uh, the maximum building height allowed in the plan development is thirty-five feet, and the applicant is requesting a variance from the PD text to allow a maximum building height of fifty-one feet on this parcel only, and actually, all of the nearby hotels on Gateway Center Boulevard are in the Golden Isles Gateway PD where maximum building height up to sixty feet is allowed. And this is the zoning map, showing the parcel with the blue star, and, uh, this area north where the other hotels are along Gateway Center are in a different PD where, as I said previously, building heights are allowed up to sixty feet. This is the site plan that was approved by the mainland planning commission Tuesday night, showing the hotel right here, this is Gateway Center Boulevard, this is Canal Crossing, uh, this is the new Peachtree Intermediate Care to the south, and this is the conceptual elevations of what the fifty-one-foot-tall hotel is gonna look like. And these are your possible motions, and Mr. Lemmings is here to speak on the project today.
Okay, all right, any questions for staff?
Sir, can you help me understand where the, I want to make sure I had my bearings correct yesterday, there's a hotel that's in that same ordinance jurisdiction that was, is within code, that's right across from it, I believe, can you, is that to the?
Oh, you're talking about this building here?
I don't remember the name of it, it was like.
Yeah, those are dormitories for the college, actually.
Oh, that's dormitory.
Yeah, the, the other hotels are north on.
I know the hotels are down there, oh, that's not a hotel.
Yeah, no, no, that's not a hotel adjacent to the site.
Right across the street from those with dormitories?
Yeah, no, they're dorms for the college.
Oh.
Yeah.
Anybody got any other questions for staff?
No, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, uh, if we could hear from the applicant, please.
Jake Lemmings with Robert Civil Engineering, um, Maurice, Maurice hit on it pretty well, I will add a couple of things, so, um, you probably see the, the site plan that you may have there, can you show it on the screen there? So a couple of things on this, the, the hotel, you know, it's just kind of on a uniquely-shaped lot right now, and there's also a forty-foot-wide drain easement that's, uh, going through it, wants, uh, um, which you probably have on your, on your site plan there, that's more of a zoomed-in version of this, and then the twenty-five-foot building setbacks and the parking requirements, it's kind of why we're asking for that, um, that four-foot high, and you can kind of see here what Maurice has pulled up, we went out and, uh, we got the measurements on the existing hotels in the area, and it's kind of what you were hitting on a second ago, kind of the proximity to the hotels, so you're looking at, um, there's two four-story hotels there, the Holiday Inn Express and the Comfort Inn and Suites, um, both of those, you know, they're kind of ranging from forty to forty-five feet, so they are over that thirty-five, so, you know, in that PD text, it states that you can go up to sixty feet if approved by the fire, um, if approved by fire, and then also the, the Holiday Inn and Suites is a fifty-three-feet, five-story hotel, so we're kind of, you know, below that, below that fifty-three, um, the highest one there, so we did, the, the, um, client, uh, Choice Hotels, and, and we attended the DRT meeting, uh, pretty early on before we started with the site plan, and we discussed with them, the, the county there, and the fire and airport were there, and they did look at this at that time and tell us that, um, you know, they're fine with the fifty-one feet, and I believe there's probably a recording of that, but also it went through site plan, and the fire and airport both have approved the site plan, and obviously, we just went through the, the NPC meeting on, for the site plan on Tuesday, so those, they have all reviewed and are compliant with, with what we're, what we're showing there, and with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Just a real simple question, your fifty-one foot's to your highest point?
It's to the, the tallest parapet of the hotel, that's right.
What's, uh, the empty lot, I guess that's to the north directly, but what, that's in, which, which PD text is that in, the one that I guess is directly above, is that?
That's in a, I believe, that's in a separate PD text, that's a separate PD text, that's right.
Do, do we know what text that is?
Yeah, I believe it may be the Golden Isles Gateway Pause PD.
Okay.
Directly north of it.
I know I'm in the minority of it, and I know you sound like you got a whole lot of boxes checked, I just have to say, um, I find it interesting that the comps you're using are outside the ordinance, but I can, you know, like I said, that didn't matter to anybody else, but it does matter to me, and so I just want to go on record as saying that, um, when I want to do something that doesn't fit, I can easily go out and point out the comps that have all different situations and say, see, mine is just like that, and we've, and it sounds like you put the sled on, on some real good snow, and, to use the northeast kind of analogy, and it just flew by everybody in terms of nobody ever stopped, perhaps, and, though I was not at all the meetings, and said, oh, wait a second, we're starting at zero, uh, the paradigm has shifted, it's not that ordinance anymore, it's a different ordinance, but you're using all comps from another ordinance to get all of this through, and, and I agree with everything that you said in terms of, yeah, it checks all the boxes, and, and you did everything you were supposed to do, I just found it interesting in that respect, and then from another perspective, when I was there yesterday, I was trying to get a sense of, um, was there any, and I, I didn't really understand the, the site plan, is there anything for like a sidewalk in front of it to go down that road, um, out to where the shopping center is, that's one question. And then the other one was, that, and I understand from an, an economic development perspective, and tax base for Glen County and all those kind of things, which puts me on that, that plus side of it, um, that is gonna be like, not to overdramatize it, but that's gonna be like a skyscraper in that little area compared to all those businesses that are like within ordinance all the way around, I just thought that was kind of interesting how it got, that was, that was passed through also, but I just needed to, I, you know, I guess more statement than question, but I just needed to unload that stuff because I did my homework on it, and I just wanted to share that with you, my perspective, thank you.
All right, yeah, I appreciate your comments, to, to answer your, your question on the sidewalk, it's just a sidewalk that you see here around, around the building and access from the parking lot, there's no, um, sidewalk proposed to connect to any of the, uh, the, the areas that you were talking about, so it's just within the property boundary for the sidewalk. And then for, for speaking to the, like, the height as it relates to here versus kind of the others, Maurice, if you can go back to that, that overall larger view, uh, you know, I understand what you were saying about this is part of a PD text, and the other one's part of a separate PD, PD text, really, you know, we were, we were looking at this more of like kind of setting, setting the area, so you've got your fifty-one here, and you've got hotels all in this area, and you've got your fifty-three up at the top, so it kind of creates that good boundary area, it's kind of the way we were, we were looking at it, so, um, Wesley, you might have.
I, I know, I, I understand, and like I said, everybody, many people before me saw it that way, too, I just thought it was interesting, from a layman's perspective of the way I look at things, like, whoa, that's comps like.
Yeah.
You know?
Gotcha.
Well, that's like me saying, now, those three people are getting paid much more than I am, um, without going into the, the particulars and getting down to the root thing about, you know?
Right.
The PD's, the, you know, the job description's different, that's why they get paid more, this thing here, the ordinance is different, that's why those buildings are higher than what's allowed here, it's that simple, but, like I said, minority, boxes checked, thanks.
Yes, sir.
I'll stop him.
Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering, just, just to hit on your point there, just a little clarification, so I've got Dr. John Callaway here, he was instrumental in bringing this canal crossing development to Glen County here, that PD text that we're referring to that this particular hotel is in, was developed, you know, ten years ago, and I asked, asked Dr. Callaway the same question, because I'd figure it'd come up, you know, at the time, when that PD text was developed, you know, he had, I guess, a plan, and obviously can, plans can change, um, developments can change, and that's kind of where we're at now, and why we're asking for this, just on that particular piece of property, Dr. Callaway, he's very particular on his tenants and people that come in and request, you know, potentially to purchase the property, or, you know, provide a leasable piece of property for a, a good space and a good tenant, um, so he feels like Choice Hotels is a great tenant to have here, it kind of closes this particular piece of development, um, inside that loop, so in front of there, like Maurice pointed out earlier, we've got Outlet K, which is on the. So in front of there, like Maurice pointed out earlier, we've got Outlot K, which is on the corner, just south of this development. You've got Peachtree Medical Care, which is kind of in the middle. And you've got South Coast Bank, which is to the southwest corner. So this, this whole little area is pretty much, will be built out with the addition of this hotel. And we feel like, you know, with that being in the rear, like Jake just stated, it kind of sets the backdrop between the two different developments. So I'm just a little bit of clarification on that.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
When the mainland planning commission approved, they approved this, you say, last night?
They approved it on Tuesday with the condition that the height variance would be, it would only become effective if the height variance was approved by...
The mainland planning commission, when they approved the site plan, do they approve just the footprint or they approve the height?
No, they approved just, just the footprint. You, you're going to have to approve the height variance if you so choose.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of, you know, looking at it, I know, you know, when the PD was, when the PD was written ten years ago, at some point, you have to transition from one to the next. And I totally get in this area where this area has, in the last several years, has grown tremendously. And the hotels are moving further down. So I totally get that. You know, in my opinion, it's consistent with what's there. You know, we're actually less than what proposed, less than the Holiday Inn and Suites. Your four floors, correct? You know, and then also I have to look at the economical side of it, too. If it's not economically feasible for, for someone to develop there, you know, that's, you have to look at it. I try to weigh, you know, jobs and income and all this stuff as well, so. I mean, I, overall, I think I'm okay with it. I don't know if my colleagues feel, but...
Well, I like Mike's point about sidewalks. I think that would have been a great idea to create a bunch of sidewalks, you know, over to the shopping areas and, and restaurants and stuff. That would have been a fantastic idea. Although I know that's an expensive proposition, you know, with, with the cost of land in, in those areas. But, yeah, it's also out of our parameter. That's for sure, so.
Thanks. I know it would be in the minority, but I figured that might be a fair trade-off. How about, how about we give you a floor for how many rooms that is and you give a sidewalk back?
Well, you know, unfortunately, people like to drive these days and not walk. So that's, that's quite unfortunate.
All right. Any other questions or comment for applicant?
No.
All right. Thank you. All right. Public comment section. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Would please step to the podium. Say your name, please.
My name is John Callaway and I, sorry, I didn't expect to speak this morning, but I wanted to share one thing that no one's brought up yet about this project. You know, we are in the process of talking to some really wonderful restaurants about being at Canal Crossing. Restaurants that aren't in the, in Glen County, not in this region. And to have a hotel sitting there is of great interest to these restaurants because they're within easy walking distance. And that's something that, you know, that's something that these, that, that makes these sorts of concentrated areas really work and important. So I just wanted to point that out, that right in front of this hotel, as a matter of fact, we have a, a project already poised for two fine restaurants. And they're excited about having this rest, this hotel right behind them. And that, that's not the only two either, so. Just wanted to share that with you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any other comments for or against? All right. Close the public comment section. Any more further discussion from the board?
No.
All right. Can I call for a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve ZV five-five-six-one S present.
All right. A motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor? All right. Got your variance. All right. Moving on down the list. ZV five-five-six-three, one-seven-one McKenna Place. Consider variance to the Glen County zoning ordinance in section seven-one-three-point-four to reduce the side and rear yard setback for an existing structure at one-seventy-one McKenna Place. Parcel zero-three dash zero-eight-nine-seven-eight. The property is zoned highway commercial. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for Mark Miller Coastal Recreation Storage LLC. From staff, please.
Maurice, coastal planning and zoning again. The property owner in this project had constructed a forty-eight-hundred-square-foot commercial building on the property without first obtaining site plan approval or a commis, commercial building permit. The existing building violates both the rear and side setback. Highway commercial zoning has a seven-foot side setback and a seven-foot rear setback. The survey shows the existing building is four-point-three feet from a side property line and six-point-seven feet from the rear property line. And the property to the east is also owned by the applicant for this project. Glen County Community Development was notified of the unpermitted building by the property appraisers office on May tenth. Building inspector John Farnsworth visited the site and made a working without a permit inspection on the next day, May eleventh. And shortly after that, the applicant did come visit the community development department to find out what he needed to do. And he has since filed applications for site plan approval, which is scheduled for next month's NPC meeting and for this variance. This is the zoning map showing all of the lots in the McKenna Place subdivision are in highway commercial. There's the area of R-nine zoning to the south. This is the overall survey of where the building is situated on Mr. Miller's property. This is an inset of the survey showing the rear setback violation and also the side setback violation. And we did receive one letter of support from the neigh, from the neighbor to the south, Grant Goodbred of Goodbred Enterprises. His comment was, we approved of the variance for this parcel and approve of it not having a landscape buffer. These are your possible motions. And if you do choose to approve this project, there are a couple of conditions that the county attorney's office suggested. That this variance will become effective when the NPC approves the site plan with a modification of buffer requirements and an expedited plat combining lot two and parcel A is recorded. And Mr. Lemmings is here to speak on this project as well.
Okay. Megan, any questions for staff on this one?
Yes. What is the parcel A? That, that, is that, what'd you say about that?
Lot two and parcel A are both within one tax parcel. But the county attorney's office has had a chance to review all of the deeds and plats going back on this property for twenty years. And it's their opinion that lot two and parcel A are separate lots, which is why they suggested the condition of the lot combination. But lot two, parcel A, and the property to the east are all owned by the same property owner.
So Mr. Miller owns property, parcel A also?
Yes. Yes, it's all part of one tax parcel with lot two.
So why, why is the parcel A, that, is that a, because I see there's a sanitary well and lift station and a control panel. Is that an easement for sewer?
To tell you the truth, I, I don't have the answer to that. The county's attorney's office, like I said, reviewed all these deeds going back twenty years. It's indeterminate whether parcel A was originally intended to be part of lot one or lot two or on its own. So a lot combination would fix these issues, but I can't answer that particular question.
I'm not sharp as a knife in the drawer, but it's weird to have just a, I don't know how wide parcel A is, but it's, it's not usable for anything. Why wouldn't it be part of one lot or another if it wasn't a sewer adjustment?
It, it should be part of either one lot or lot two, but there's never been a deed establishing that, which is necessitate, like I said, the lot combination.
Mr. Lemmings may be able to answer that question.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, the applicant owns, I know you say he owns parcel A and lot two. Does he, he owns the piece to the east of it, you said?
Yeah, the coastal storage lot to the east. Yes, he owns that as well.
Test one.
All right. Any more questions for... All right. Thanks, sir. All right. Can we hear from applicant, please?
Hey, Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering. The owner wanted me to pass on. He intended to be here. It had a death in the family on Tuesday, so he had to go to town. But I can answer the question for, for what you were asking about parcel A. So originally, Richard McKenna owned lot one, which then Mr. Miller ended up purchasing that. Well, so lot, parcel A was a part of lot two. And then Richard McKenna, whenever he purchased lot one, asked Mr. Miller to, that he needed some extra space to park overflow cars for that dealership. So he ended up parceling out this parcel A for overflow, for automobiles, for that dealership, is what Mr. Miller told me. So the plan is to combine, as the attorney suggested. The plan for Mr. Miller is to combine lot two with parcel A into one parcel again, as it was previously. So at that point, there would be the lot one and then the lot two. And then so we get back to where, where we're within the building setbacks. Where it, for the south property, Mr. Goodbred there, you know, he gave his opinion on how he suggested that we move forward with the approval. We're at six-point-seven feet from that south property line, and it needs to be the seven feet. You can see that there. The reason it was done there, according to Mr. Miller, he, he measured from the existing fence that you see surveyed there versus the actual property line. So there was a, that was a, just an error on his part there. And then the four-point-three feet, that was just a mistake altogether. I guess from owning both properties, he, there was an issue there. The reason that he stated to me that he didn't know that he needed to go through the full permitting process is that he did not run any utilities of this building. And so he didn't know that he needed to go through that formal process. But now he assures that, you know, in the future, he'll, he'll do the right thing, since he knows the, knows the process. So what we're requesting is to have variance for the six-point-seven feet from the rear and then the four-point-three from the lot two and to lot, from the lot one property line because that, that parcel A would be combined with the lot two as a part of an expedited plat.
Well, is, is it okay to build in the buffer? I thought the buffer was there, so you weren't supposed to do anything in a buffer.
So that, that is one thing, and Maurice can speak to that. The, there's a twenty-foot buffer that, that you see that kind of dash line going through. And that's a part that we'll have to get approved at the site plan meeting with the NPC. So from Maurice, you can speak to that there.
Yeah, the NPC has the authority in the zoning ordinance to grant a variance from the landscape buffer. So that, they'll also have to get approval for that in order to, in order to make this building, comply with the law. Yes.
I actually have a question. I don't know if you can answer it. It may be more suited to Mr. Carver. Since this was a, a building that was built without permit... Because, you know, I don't, I don't want to vote for something to grant to leave a commercial building that we don't know what's holding it down. What are...
Dave Carver, Building Inspection Department. Mark did not, or Mr. Miller did not get a permit as stated. So he will have to go through the process if this all gets approved of having some engineers sign off that it has the proper footings, proper tie-downs.
All right. Yeah, that, that would just, like I said, I don't want to get somehow hung on a hook when we let something go that wasn't, wasn't going to stay there and hurting.
He'll have to make it right with us as well.
Okay.
Is that possible? I mean, to, to, to get something this far along?
Good answer.
Is this a one-time occurrence with this applicant? In other words, has he, has he built something without a permit before?
Far as I know, it's a one-time occurrence. I think he's had a couple of little storage buildings added to his other piece of property over there without a permit. But they probably, probably were under the square foot requirement. I don't know what the sizes are. But those would have been temporary buildings that you buy off the side of the road.
Okay.
I do not know for sure.
Gotcha. All right. Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
All right. Any other...
Yeah, can you help me understand a little bit here? That dotted line, that twenty-foot, is that what is considered like a construction setback kind of thing?
It's a buffer.
When you say buffer, I, I wasn't sure what that meant with the twenty feet.
Well, generally, you have a plat and you have, you show a buffer and nothing's supposed to be built in the buffer.
Okay, that, okay. So my, my term from what I'm used to is, it was explained to me as a construction setback. Nothing can be constructed in that twenty-foot buffer.
It's not supposed to be. I thought that's what a buffer was for myself.
That's what, yeah. But that's what I'm saying. That's, I mean...
Sure. I did research on this. We actually couldn't find out what exactly the twenty-foot buffer is supposed to be at the time that this, that the, the first expedited plat and the final plat were recorded for this. The buffer between commercial and residential property was only three feet. Now it's twenty feet, but back then it was only three feet. So we couldn't find exactly what that twenty-foot buffer was supposed to be. We don't think it was a condition for final plat approval from the Board of Commissioners. And like I said, it, it wasn't a landscape buffer requirement from that time.
And it was said that there's no utilities running to this building? Was that stated?
Is that correct?
That's correct. There's no utilities.
No lights at all?
That's, that's what I was...
This is, this is a warehouse. I mean, I think you'd have lights in there.
I was told there's no utilities and it's used for just storage.
Okay.
And it's on a slab?
Yes, it is. Yeah, there's a photo of it.
I'll put it in the packet. Yeah, it should be.
So they measured from the, the six-seven, Mr. Miller measured from the, from the fence to the building. What was he, what was, what was he shooting for to be off the fence? What was his projected footage to be off of the fence? Do you have any idea?
So my understanding, it was trying to be that seven feet off the property line, but he measured from the actual fence.
Couldn't that just be more?
Not knowing, I guess, that the fence was not on the property line.
That's the punishment.
And I will, I will say that for the, the four-three, you know, we're talking about combining the parcel A and the lot two already. We're, you know, that's the plan moving forward. But there is, you know, he is open to also when doing that, shift over the property line for lot, the lot one, just to, to be seven-foot and so kind of shift that over to provide that seven-foot buffer off that existing building if, if need be.
Is that paving, is that paving the shade in there?
I believe it's existing asphalt.
But you're talking about moving that line, that property line there.
Moving it over three-ish feet to be able to provide that seven-foot buffer. So really, you'd be looking at that south property line if we did that. Which, again, the south property owner is, is okay with it.
Has he by chance mentioned to Mr. Goodbred about purchasing about thirteen feet of property? I, I don't even know if that's an option or not.
I'm not sure. I know, I know he spoke with him this week and just talked to him about the variance and got him to sign, had him sign the form about the landscape and the setback. And he had, had no issue with it. But I haven't spoken with him about acquiring any property.
And what's, what's Goodbred's property? What's that zone? Is that zone the same thing? You say it's residential?
Yeah, no, it's actually zoned R-nine, which is why a landscape buffer is required between this lot and Mr. Goodbred's lot.
In the application, the word, and I don't mean to laugh at it. The word was used incidentally constructed and not accidentally, incidentally, which is like a chance, a chance occurrence. Well, by chance, using that same concept, was it ever discussed that, okay, since you built it without a permit, we'll give you that point three, but you need to eliminate that one storage piece, that one door at the end? And that brings the whole building into compliance, especially since there's no utilities. I don't understand why that was never part of the conversation. The picture that we have in our packet, they have all those doors. And if it's a metal building and it's, and it's nothing going there, no utilities, why wouldn't they ju, and I don't know if each, if it's almost like a storage unit where there's walls, but why would they, metal building, I don't know. Why would they just not be able to eliminate that piece on the end? And that, that goes away where they violated the law.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how the building was constructed. And, and that's kind of what we were getting at. We could shift that property line over three feet if need be for that, that lot, toward lot one, since he owns that property.
I'm just asking if that was ever discussed.
So there will be a footing around the perimeter of the building? And if they cut that part of the building off, there's not going to be a footing to support that into the building. It'd be a slab. We don't know their footing. You're correct.
Can we make a motion?
You don't know if it's footed right now.
Yeah, theoretically.
We do not know that.
And a warehouse without lights?
Can we make a motion that, about the south? Can we make a motion that, about the south property line and that, it's a well, the south property line is only like, what, what, like point-three inches?
Point-three feet, yeah.
Point-three feet, yeah. And the, but the east prop, east property line, that's the one he's talking about possibly buying more property to make up for it?
Well, he doesn't need to buy the property, he owns the property to the east. He would just shift the lot line when he does the lot combination.
Okay.
Along the, the backside of the, where Goodbread Enterprises, that's what I was proposing, possibly purchase some property from Goodbread Enterprises to get him inside the, I would be fine with the four-point-three being he owns both pieces of property. If he can acquire some property from Grant Goodbread to get him out of the setbacks along the back. And then, then if he can pacify the county, then he's back in business and putting some lights in there.
All right, any other?
Can I say one more thing? And so just to, just to make sure I'm clear on this, so this, the six, the six-seven, you know, we're, we're trying to get the building setback. And I understand what you're saying about buying the property from the, Mr. Goodbread. And that may be something that we need to do, but we'd like to go before the MPC and try to get that approved for the, for that portion through the MPC. And if that ends up becoming a condition, I'd like it, you know, for them to, to bring that up there. And we can also bring that up to them at the MPC and, and, and say that.
I guess, I, I don't know, this is a question for my chairman, could we? Like the MPC did the, what's the first thing we listened to? They, they approved it with our, they approved it with our approval. If we approve this with the, if him able to purchase some property from Mr. Goodbread, if the MPC approves it, he's got our variance, because like I said, being he owns the two pieces of property, parcel A, lot two and lot one. He owns all of that, I mean, I, I, that's a, I, I think that'd be punishment enough if he was able to purchase some property, pacify, build inspection department and mainland planning commission. Just to try to be as fair as possible.
And move that line.
If we, if he purchases enough property from Grant Goodbread to get him out of setbacks along the back.
I was, can you go back to the, the conditions that were set?
Sure. There's a lot of conditions, there is. This is a fruitcake.
So that's what you're saying, that first bullet, the modification of the buffer requirement, is that what you're saying, he would purchase that property?
Well, what this is saying is they've got a condition on it that if we approve the variance, then then this would become effective, but it's not effective unless we approve, because, yeah, they've, they've already granted the, the buffer.
Sure, there's no way the mainland planning commission should approve this without you granting a variance.
So it's already been through that, through the mainland planning commission?
No, this hasn't.
Oh, this one has?
No, no, it's the Everhome Suites that has, yeah, no, this is scheduled for October.
So we don't know what the modification of the buffer?
Well, it would be a waiver of the twenty-foot buffer that's currently required under the zoning ordinance to the distance of building to the property line. That would be the modification of the landscape buffer that the MPC would have to approve.
And that's not our, that's not our call.
If he moves a property line on the east and purchases the property line on, and move the property line on the south, then there's no variance is required, right?
Sure, potentially if all that occurs, then right neither, this variance or that variance would be required, but of course it's, we don't know whether any of that would, would happen.
Well, you know he can move the property line on the east.
Oh, sure, yes, when he does the lot combination, he could do that, yes, of course.
So the second bullet combines his two properties?
Right, it combines.
So that removes four point, that removes that variance in the right corner?
No, it combines, technically, he is built over a lot line because parcel A is a separate lot, even though he owns it. So what combining the two lots would do would remove this black line right here.
Oh, that lot?
Yeah, right, yeah.
But it doesn't help that.
No.
Property here along this, along here, so that this gets into compliance with the, with the actual property line.
Right, I understand that. And in that corner?
And, and again, it being he owns it, but it being the same guy who owns all of these.
That's his property over here.
Correct, he, he owns this piece, this piece, and this, yeah, he owns everything.
So he owns all three of them?
All three pieces, yes.
So why, why wouldn't they say you need to combine this and this to get rid of the four-point-three rather than the interior black line?
Because that, then.
Because that doesn't remove the, that, that doesn't remove the.
But he would still have a, but he'd still have a piece of property coming across the property line if they, if they did that. If they, if that, if this line's not removed, he would have a piece of property coming, if this line's not removed, he would have a piece of property adjoining all, all two pieces.
But if you remove both of them and it's all his property, then you get rid of that four-point-three issue.
And I don't know what's on this parcel, lot one and all.
But he owns it, right? So if you want to.
Well, could we postpone it to see if he can buy that property and move the property line?
Yeah, you can certainly defer.
We could defer it to see if that's an option, but it, when is it on the?
It's on the October third MPC agenda.
Can you go back to the slide just before that to show those, those lines so I could?
Sure.
Yeah. So what I was asking, am I? No, that, no, the one you had, okay, solid left line, then that little rec, that, that little rectangle where the four-point-three is, he owns that. Plus that shaded area on the right, he owns that.
That's correct, he owns lot two, parcel A and lot one.
So if both of those two lines went away by him combining all three, then the four-point-three is not necessary. And if he purchased that little piece of property down below, then that takes care of that buffer issue?
That's correct, if all those things occurred, then there would be no more issues.
All right, thank you. I think that's fair.
Okay, any more questions or comments?
No, do the other part.
Uh, moving into public comment section, anybody here to speak for or against? Okay, hearing none, moving on. Any more discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to defer ZV five-five-six-three to see if he can obtain property from Goodbread Enterprises on the rear. And it appears Ray Cruz on the other corner doesn't have a issue with it, he would be here today. So for his variance, I would make, I'll make an approval to defer upon and to give him time to purchase some property from Mr. Goodbread.
I'll second that.
Okay, then we're deferring to the next meeting?
Well, we need to defer it to after, yeah, I guess.
Well, yeah, the next meeting would be.
So you're gonna defer to a date uncertain?
I, I would recommend date uncertain because him to purchase property, get it surveyed and get all that done, I would, I would let, I, I think if it's possible to let Mr. Miller reach out to you when he's ready to come back in front of us.
You know, in, in light of, I can't get over the fact that he didn't permit this project, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't buy that, but because he's been, he's been in landscape business a long time, he should know these, these rules, especially for a project like that. This gives him an opportunity to get this whole thing into compliance. And, you know, it, even if we, even if he had to have a variance for that little, that other little piece.
Ray Cruz?
By, by Mr. Cruz, I think we're okay with that. And, and get this other lot line taken care of. So, but over, over, the permit issue nail is the one on my side.
Mr. Chairman, if I understand this correctly, what the condition is, that if he can purchase that piece of property below, then that takes care of four inches, but what about the four-point, what about the variance on the right corner?
He owns the property, he's gonna move that property.
He just, he just needs to combine those two lots.
So when he combines the two lots, that takes care of that on that corner?
Well, no, not really, because technically that variance would still.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, without, and where he would have to combine all three to completely eliminate that.
That's what I.
To your, to your point.
Yes.
The motion on the floor is to defer indefinitely until he can see if he can purchase the property, I guess that's to the south, or, yeah. Yeah, if he can purchase property there to correct that, then when it comes back before us, we could address this four-point-three issue once he corrects that lot line issue. Because honestly, I'm like, like these guys, I'm okay with a four-point-three if that lot line's there with him owning both of those, if he can correct the one on the bottom.
And pacify the county.
I'd like to see him move that.
Well, that's a given.
All right, so if you would, for the record, just, we had some conversation there, just restate your motion so we're clear.
I defer ZV five-five-six-one indefinitely until we can.
But ZV's five-five-six-three?
I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't have my microphone on, I, I make a motion to defer ZV five-five-six-three indefinitely until Mr. Miller can attempt to obtain property from Goodbread Enterprises to correct the deficiency on the rear of the property.
All right, got a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Got a second, all those in favor? All right, deferred. All right, any further business from anybody?
We have no further announcements.
Officially adjourned, thank you.